Good morning. We will call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners October 21st, 2020, to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and although she doesn't know it, I'm going to ask Anne Faust if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. So, welcome, everybody. I guess we have three row officers here, a few officers here. If you want to introduce yourselves. Liking you in that shield?
County-issued.
County-issued? It's messing my hair up, but I'm working with it. No, when I put mine on. I'm working on it. So, good morning, everybody, and we have one proclamation for today, which I will read. Whereas lead poisoning is the leading preventable environmental threat to children in the United States, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has determined that there exists no safe blood level in children, as even low levels can result in permanent brain damage, learning disabilities, behavior problems, and other serious health issues. And whereas lead poisoning poses a significant and particular threat to children in Bucks County, where a majority of our homes were built prior to 1978, when there was no ban on lead-based paint. And whereas Bucks County's Department of Housing and Community Development has put to use a $1.5 million grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in creating the Lead-Based Paint Hazard Control Program to foster lead remediation in low-to-moderate-income homes. And whereas the last week in October is dedicated to raising awareness of lead hazards in the home, encouraging testing for lead exposure and spreading the word about efforts to remediate this ongoing problem. So now, therefore do we, the Bucks County Commissioners, proclaim October 25th through 31st Lead Poisoning Prevention Week throughout the county of Bucks. And in so doing, we commit our full support to the Department of Housing and Community Development and its efforts to protect the children and families of our communities by eliminating the threat of lead poisoning in Bucks County. And we have Kate Marsaglia here, and Kate is working on the lead paint development -- I was going to say abatement, but it's lead paint control -- hazard control. So, Kate, you know, when I was just reading that, it said that it's the number-one environmental threat to children in the United States and in Bucks County due to our housing structures being a lot of them before 1978, including my own. And I know I've painted it several times, but I hadn't, you know, known that it could still be a danger. So can you tell us a little bit about the lead paint?
While most people associate the risk of lead-based paint with children eating paint chips, the primary cause of lead poisoning are the ingesting or inhaling of lead-contaminated dust in and around older homes. According to the CDC, even low levels of lead can cause permanent brain damage, nervous system damage, learning and behavior problems, and result in lower IQs. Lead is also associated with higher dropout rates and delinquency. Children under six are most at risk because of how quickly their brains are developing. Even children who seem healthy may have dangerous levels of lead in their blood. A simple blood test can detect for the presence of lead. Low levels of -- even low levels of lead in children can cause speech, language, and behavior problems, brain damage, developmental delays, hearing problems, anemia, nervous system and kidney damage, learning disabilities, ADD, decreased intelligence, decreased muscle and bone growth, seizures, constipation, abdominal pain, vomiting, weight loss, loss of appetite. In rare cases, ingestion of lead can cause seizures, coma, and death, and pregnant women are also at special risk. Through the Lead-Based Paint Hazard Control Program, qualifying Bucks County families can receive a full lead risk assessment of their home, as well as an abatement plan and abatement services. Improvements to homes often include items such as new windows, doors, siding, trim, interior and exterior painting, porch repair, and other home safety measures. For more information, you can contact hcd@buckscounty.org, and we're happy about this new program.
Just a quick question. I think I learned from you that I always wondered why children eat the paint chips, but I think you said that that's because they taste good?
That's right. They taste sweet, so children often will eat them.
I always wondered that, and that was an important information. And also, in a house like mine that's been repainted, I don't have to worry about it anymore because I've got five layers of paint over any possible lead?
No, even under newer layers of paint, there can be lead paint hazards. So usually around windows, doors, if you see chalking, cracking, chipping paint, that's a hazard and needs immediate attention.
Okay. So we will put the website and the contact information on our website, and here's the proclamation if you'd like to take that.
Thank you.
Do you need a picture of the -- anybody here?
No.
Wait. She said no. Just look at the -- okay. Stand in front of us. I guess we're doing the thing. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that with us.
Yes, thank you.
So we will move to public comments. These will be on agenda items. And first, we'll see if there are any online comments, if the solicitor has any.
Mr. Commissioner, we have one. If we can read now, there's another. We need the commenter to provide some more information. But we have, meantime, a comment from Andy Warren from Langmore. His comment on agenda items concerns items 10I, 10C, and E. These are all related to general services. And his comments as follows. Number one, by the conclusion of today's meeting, the Commissioner will approve -- will have approved the purchase of four vehicles for the General Services Department during the month of October. The total cost of the four vehicles is $197,335-81,927, of which are COVID-19 dollars. Question, did the four vehicles, quote-unquote, replace four existing vehicles, or are they in addition, quote-unquote, to existing vehicles? Number two, are both the $8,998, quote-unquote, reduction referenced in 10C and the $41,775, quote-unquote, increase referenced in 10E for the same project? If so, what is the total, quote-unquote, project cost? Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Is it -- that's it? That's the only public comment online?
At this time, Commissioner, if the other commenter provides missing information, we could just read that later in the meeting.
Okay. Is there any public comment in the building, in the room? Sorry. Okay. Seeing none. Kevin, do you want to address those questions on 10?
Certainly, Commissioner. The first question was regarding the vehicles. Those four vehicles are replacement vehicles. So vehicles that we have now are box truck that was originally purchased. I believe the one we have is from 1990s. It's on its last legs. And that truck is used across the county. As our warehouse staff used that to deliver supplies, mail, files, all over the county amongst -- so that was the one COVID purchase. Lately, we've been using that mainly for supply distribution of all the hand sanitizer, masks, all sorts of things, as we've gotten them out to different facilities, and we'll continue to do that. The other vehicles are basically simply replacement vehicles. So we have a large amount of vehicles that were purchased in 2009, pickup trucks, vans, utility vans that our trade staff use. That's what those vehicles are replacing at this point. So we generally have to, in order to keep up with the fleet, we're working on kind of cycling in an overall replacement cycle. So we're replacing a certain amount every year. There's close to about 70 different vehicles we have within our fleet, within our parks, within, you know, our trade staff, you know, up here at this campus. And to keep those in good operating, working, safe condition for our staff, we're working getting them on regular replacements. That's generally anywhere from five to seven vehicles a year is what that will end up being from a general replacement standpoint. So we will sell or possibly find a new use for those outgoing vehicles if they have some life left in them. So the second question was regarding the change orders. One is a deduct, has to do with lighting that was installed. It was a different temperature, really. With Kelvin's, it measures temperature on a lighting bulb. The bulb that was put in was 3,500 Kelvin rather than 4,000 Kelvin. The lighting levels are adequate. As we've looked at them, we had no complaints relative to them, and it works. So rather than having the contractor come back into a finished office space and disrupt our entire office, we're actually taking the credit back for the difference in that. So that's the credit we're receiving. The other bound is relative to some conductors up in the penthouse level of the rotunda portion of this building. The conductors were old, original to the building. They were found to be inefficient and not safe for the new loads and things they were going to be carrying. So they're upgrading those to meet current electrical standards. That's the addition of that change order.
Okay. Well, that -- thank you for that explanation. That makes sense. From the Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the October 7th, 2020 meeting, and numbers one through 15?
So moved.
Sorry. Any questions? All those in favor? I opposed. Moving on to the regular agenda. Number 16. Under General Services, we have a contract with Pinoni Associates, Incorporated, to approve a contract to provide engineering and construction administration services for the proposed Humphreys Park Education Center needed due to the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $59,750. And Vanguard Modular Building Systems, LLC, Exton, Pennsylvania, approval for a contract for pre-manufactured modular building to serve as the Humphreys Park Education Center needed as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. This is in the amount of $333,764. And our projects and -- I'm going to get your title. I'm going to do this every time. Our diversity and projects director, Bernard Griggs, is going to tell us about this, but I will just start by saying, I received a call from the district attorney, I guess, a couple months ago, making me aware of the fact that there were children in need in this neighborhood, and there was definitely a problem with broadband internet and their ability to access that, you know, in terms of the COVID-19 virus. And that school district that they are in is still closed, I believe, till February. So there is a need for them to be able to access that broadband, as well as use laptops that we will be able to provide. And there's also a lunch problem in terms of those children are unable to drive, or their families may be home or at work because they're essential workers, and unable to drive in and pick up the lunches. So this would be a place where they can be delivered as well. So Bernard, now that I'm still working on your title...
You're doing a fine job, Commissioner, and thank you for that. So the Humphreys Park Education Center will be located in the Bloomsdale-Fleetwood community and is located at 5619 Mitchell Road in Leventown. The new education center will be a 2,000-square-foot new manufactured modular building that will be supplied and delivered 100% turnkey, as Commissioner indicated, by the Vanguard Modular Building Systems, LLC, company out of Exton, Chester County, Pennsylvania. The building will be fully equipped with broadband internet service, a fire suppression system, a security and fire alarm, and will serve as a new education center for the children and others in the Bristol-Leventown community. The nonprofit group, No Longer Bound, will operate their community-based educational programs and other programs out of the building. Site and civil engineering, which you just heard was just approved, will be done by Pinoni. Currently, we are seeking township approvals and permits. And just as recently as last night, Commissioner Marsaglia and myself attended the Bristol Township meeting, where we were on the agenda for waiver of land development, which we were granted. And this waiver will allow us to continue on the path of completion by our December 30 completion date. And so site work and foundation, along with utilities, will begin within the next couple of weeks, and we are still on track to a December 30 completion date. I have to tell you, as Commissioner Marsaglia indicated, the building is an absolute necessity in that community under normal circumstances, but in the midst of the pandemic, even more so. And when you look at a community that is 95% African-American, close to 300 homes in the community, lower income, a lot of the folks that live in an immediate community lack the resources of broadband internet and other things that would allow them to be able to operate in the midst of this pandemic. I mean, you have kids that, you know, are being homeschooled that don't have internet, that'll be able to use this education center for broadband internet and computers and so forth and so on. So, you know, as it ties into the diversity and inclusion program that we're doing here at the county, it gives me great pleasure because I love this community outreach stuff. You know, we were hearing some negative feedback in terms of the community not knowing what the building was going to be about, and wanted to just have more details in light of the fact that there were some issues years ago at the previous community center without getting into too much detail. But, you know, it's important to note that we were concerned at the county level, so we took the time to knock on doors, knocked on about 300 doors or so with the folks from No Longer Bound, as we knocked on doors and talked to some folks to get feedback on how they would feel about the community center. We also handed out a flyer to -- now, this was last Thursday we did the knocking on the doors. Just this past Saturday, Commissioner Marsaglia and myself attended the -- we had a community meeting on the park site. Outside, everybody was socially distant and so forth and so on. And it really turned into a town hall-style meeting, you know, where we got community feedback on what the issues were, what their concerns were, and we addressed them accordingly. And I have to tell you, the community was overwhelmingly in favor of the project, so that is great. And the county is committed to continue to work along with the nonprofits and other groups to make sure the programs that run out of that community center are successful. We're even talking to the Bristol Township Police about maybe running a P.A.L. league out there, you know. I should be hooking up with the DA on that, too. So it's ongoing. We're looking forward to getting it started, and it's going to be a great project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any questions?
No.
Any questions? terrific. Moving on, there's several items here in number 17. Read them, and Jeff Fields will address any questions we have and explain anything. So, under Housing and Community Development, Bucks County Opportunity Council, a contract for emergency solutions grant, funds to provide homeless assistance and support as a result of COVID-19, an amount of $360,000. Contract with Credit Counseling Center in Richborough to provide foreclosure prevention counseling and emergency mortgage assistance for those impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $133,653. We have a contract with the Housing Equality Center of Pennsylvania in Fort Washington to provide training on housing rights for consumers as related to COVID-19 housing issues in the amount of $20,000. Contract with the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. This contract for Home for Good funding for Housing and Community Development Administration and Continuum of Care activities, and this is revenue in the amount of $52,500. And a contract with the YWCA of Bucks County to -- we will be approving emergency solutions grant funds to provide homeless assistance and support as a result of COVID-19 in the amount of $580,000. So Jeff, I don't know if you want to tell us a little bit about this and answer any questions that might be?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so we have several projects here that are going to be really helpful for the community. The two are applications that we wrote to the state, DCED, for their emergency solutions grant. They account to get some of the emergency solutions grant money directly. There's also the opportunity to apply directly to the state. So the Bucks County Opportunity Council, the $360,000 is an emergency solution grant flowing through the state. It's going to provide prevention assistance for eviction prevention, case management for that purpose, as well as housing location to help those experiencing homelessness quickly move into permanent housing. And then the related grant would be the last one, number E, or letter E, is the YWCA, similar, the same source of funding, and that is $297,000 for prevention and $303,000 for rapid rehousing. So both of those are in response to the increased need that we're going to be seeing as a result of the pandemic. The Credit Counseling Center is a program we're launching to provide foreclosure counseling and financial assistance for those affected by the pandemic. So we would encourage you to call Credit Counseling Center if you are having difficulty paying your mortgage. And this is particularly for those who have been impacted as a result of the pandemic since March, where free counseling and potentially financial assistance is available to help you get current on your mortgage. The Housing Equality Centers contract is to help with education around eviction prevention for consumers and agencies, again, in response to the pandemic and the CDC's temporary halt. This is just a continuing effort to launch webinars and training to make sure that both tenants, agencies, and landlords understand the implications of the new rules and the protections afforded to tenants through the Fair Housing Act. And then the Home for Good contract, that's $52,500. This is money that comes from PHFA, which is a state housing finance agency, as well as the Federal Home Loan Bank, that is used for innovative projects related to homelessness assistance. So we will be using it for rapid exit funding for our shelter, which is to help folks exit the shelter quickly with flexible dollars, as well as marketing efforts to landlords and other organizations that would work with the homeless to encourage more participation in the community as we work together to solve the problem and homelessness in the county. I also just wanted to thank Katie Marsaglia in our office for the proclamation related to the Lead Hazard Reduction Grant and Lead Hazard Prevention Week. We are very excited to be working on that program and appreciate the proclamation that you read about it. It is startling when you see the map of Bucks County, how many properties could be potentially affected by lead-based paint. We'd encourage you to go to our website. If you just Google Bucks County lead, there's a portal that we have where you will be able to find information, mapping that shows based on where you live, how high risk of an area you live in. And again, if you live in a home prior to -- that was built prior to 1978, you know, there is a potential for risk. And if you have children under age six, we'd encourage you to get tested. If you have any -- as a result of any of that information, you would be eligible for the repairs into this program, which can make a huge difference in the lives of the kids in the county. So we're very excited about that and appreciate the Commissioner's support.
Thank you. Other questions from -- go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you for being here. The two grants for the Opportunity Council, $360,000 and a YWCA, $580,000. I'm a big fan and supporter of both groups. I think they do amazing work here in Bucks County. Would you just detail what these grants to provide homeless assistance and support might look like or could look like? What are they going to use the money for?
Sure. So again, this will be part of -- this money will be leveraged with the -- this money will be leveraged with our allocation of ESG money that comes directly to the county, but this is the state dollars. For the Opportunity Council, $250,000 is going to be direct prevention. So this is, if you call the Housing Link, you're having trouble related to eviction, you have a late notice, you're worried about losing your rental unit, this is money that will go directly to assisting tenants and landlords to avoid evictions, and this will, you know, stretch through all of 2021 and into half of 2022. I'm sorry, for this funding, it is actually just until, mainly just 2021. One of the $55,000 will be going towards housing location efforts. We are seeing some increases in homelessness as a result of the pandemic, and so we are increasing programming that goes into helping people to, when they do call the Housing Link, be connected to our street outreach team, and then quickly start working with the housing locator on finding a unit. So that housing location is an aspect of that. And then the other part is the rapid rehousing, which is working with the coach to secure the unit and then have some rental assistance as people are getting back up on their feet. That rental assistance averages around six months, and it tends to gradually go down. So you might be helping a household more initially, and then as they get an increase in income from employment or government benefits, they're able to stabilize. So that is what the Opportunity Council, as well as the YWCA, includes the same funding. So rapid rehousing, which is for those that are literally homeless, and prevention to avoid people becoming homeless as a result of not being able to pay their rent.
Yeah, I saw it on a national news network last night, and it wasn't in Pennsylvania, it was in another state, and a number of families being assisted by the local sheriff out of their apartment, knocked on their doors, they got to get out right away. And it's just so, so sad to see that happen. I mean, especially when there's children involved or older people that are involved, just to be thrown out of their home or apartment because they can't pay the rent. And interviewing them, they don't know where they're going to go. They were just telling the newspaper reporter, "I don't know where we're going. I guess we'll sleep in our car tonight." So it's just so sad to see that happen. And I think it's really important that we do something here in Bucks County to make sure that doesn't happen here in Bucks County.
Yeah, so for pretty much all of our municipal district judges, I've spoken with them, they are sending out information about the Housing Link. I know Ms. McKebbit gives the phone number pretty much every meeting. Right on our website, on the main page under highlights, there is informational brochures about the prevention assistance that's available. These are also the brochures that go out to every tenant who has an eviction filed. I would remind you, if you're watching, if you know somebody who is being evicted that hasn't called the Housing Link, to please do so. Insofar as we have been running some numbers, and we are getting a lot of folks that have evictions coming through, but something like 33% of people who are in an active eviction have not yet contacted the Housing Link. So we can't help if you don't call. So we're encouraging people to make sure to call us to avoid the various scenarios that you're talking about, Commissioner De Joromo. We certainly want to make sure that people know about the resource, and again, it is going out in the mail. We look at this as a program to both benefit tenants and landlords who are also struggling as tenants are unable to pay their rent. You know, we want to make sure that we're able to help both parties. And I will also just remind our audience and the Commissioners that there is a CDC declaration, a CDC order that involves a declaration that tenants should review, and if you believe you're eligible based on that declaration, you can give it to your landlord, and it will stop any sort of displacement until the end of the year. So there should be no reason that someone would be removed out of a unit due to non-payment of rent in 2020, as long as they are aware of that declaration and executing it. And all of that information, again, is right under the highlights section of the main page of the county website.
Just real quick, I got a question. What I was going to ask you, what the reaction from the district justice offices have been? Have they been able to get people together to try to work the tenant landlord stuff out?
Every district justice, you know, responds differently. The CDC order has some ambiguity into how it's implemented, but for the most part, you know, they all very much want to make sure that both their tenants and landlords have this information. I would say that, you know, like I said, they have agreed to be mailing it. They do let legal aid work within their offices to educate tenants and landlords about this CDC order, because it is a bit of a confusing order. You know, there's not really something of its kind, I think, that has really ever been out there at a federal level or from a public health.
So we don't have any feedback, though, on numbers? Like, how many people that have been able to be helped with this yet because the district justice sent things out?
I was looking at the numbers. I have to get to the exact number of households, but we have already helped hundreds of households. I don't have the exact number.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
But I know that I was looking at the -- I don't want to say the wrong number, you know, in our public meeting, but like I said, I know that the percentage, the numbers of evictions and the numbers we've helped, it's not the same. So we do want to make sure that anyone that has an eviction filing is calling us, because we don't -- not everyone in our -- not everyone who has an eviction filed is calling the Housing Link.
And just on a switch, tenants and landlords, can they both call about the lead paint if they're low to moderate income, or can only the landowner or the homeowner call?
That's a good question, yes. For the lead paint, both can call. For the Housing Link and eviction, the landlord can urge their tenant to call, but it is best for the tenant to call because we need to, you know, work directly with them. When it comes to lead paint, though, if rental units of landlords are concerned about lead paint as a hazard in the unit, they can contact us directly.
Okay. Now, I just want to thank you, well, for a couple of things. First off, I think it's important to note, we've made a lot of, every meeting now since, I guess, April or May, we've dedicated money to different things to fight the effects of the pandemic, and this is an example of, you know, over a million dollars that we're using to try and help people stay in their homes at a time when there's a lot of economic uncertainty and a lot of pain out there. So thank you very much for the work you're doing with that. And I also want to thank you because this is what makes And I also want to thank you, because this is what makes a bigger splash sometimes, is the economic grants we've been giving out, the Bucks Back to Work Grants. The second round is just going out now, or has gone out, and the checks have been cut in your office, obviously, and you specifically, Mr. Fields, were very, very helpful with that. And really, it could not have happened without you, so thank you for that. And thank you for the work you're doing with those who are in need in terms of their, losing their homes and trying to stay safe.
Great, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thanks. And moving to number 18, the Law Department, there's a contract with Cohen-Milstein Sellers &amp; Toll of Philadelphia to approve council's retention agreement to evaluate and litigate potential affirmative claims on behalf of the county on a contingent basis, 30% of recovery plus expenses, and a contract with Curtin &amp; Hefner of Yardley to approve a free fee agreement to represent the county's interests in Island View Crossings LP bankruptcy proceedings at $250 an hour plus expenses. Did you want to share anything on that, Mr. Khan?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. This is a first opportunity to talk about these individual contracts and also to speak to the public a little bit about the process that this administration has pursued to make sure that we are promoting transparency, efficiency, and equality in Allen County since legal work to outside law firms. Both of these law firms are firms of very strong records of representing the county. Cohen-Milstein, for many years, has been one of the law firms that has been monitoring the portfolio of the retirement fund and the tax board here at Bucks overseas. And Curtin &amp; Hefner has been engaged in a variety of different representations on behalf of the county, everything from litigation to collective bargaining and other matters. One thing we should, we should say at the outset is that, as most who attend these meetings are aware, Pennsylvania has what's called a Sunshine Act. And that is something that requires the board to deliberate and to take official action on agency business in open and public meetings. And so when we have approved work for law firms in the past, prior administrations had submitted every engagement letter or contract with a law firm for an individual approval. This board has continued that practice in instances where there has been sort of a somewhat unique or unusual arrangement, but in a different approach than prior administrations. At the very beginning of the year, this administration announced the list of law firms that it generally intended for the Law Department to engage with, and over the course of the year, established very public do not exceed rates so that we can be consistent and have some rationale for how much the county would pay a law firm to, say, do federal litigation, or how much we might pay a law firm to engage in collective bargaining. And both of those approaches are perfectly legitimate, as long as, you know, the board is being transparent about what it does. So with respect to the Cohen-Milstein arrangement, there have been a number of areas where there have been opportunities for state governments and local governments to actually get proactive in dealing with issues like environmental and health hazards like lead, things like the opioid epidemic. This board passed a False Claims Act back in the spring. These are all areas where, instead of simply defending lawsuits and overseeing contracts, there are opportunities for the county to proactively seek recovery on behalf of Bucks County for harms that have been suffered or risks that we have incurred. And Cohen-Milstein, in addition to having a good relationship with the county, is one of the nation's leaders, and is based in Washington, DC, has a very good Philadelphia office for matters in affirmative litigation. And they've really been cutting edge in a lot of matters. And when they learned of this board's interest in really being proactive in areas like this, they asked for the opportunity to represent the county in the event that there was an opportunity they could bring to us. And so this engagement letter the board is considering approving would ensure that any work they did for the county would not cost the county anything out of pocket. Their recovery, in addition to any expenses they had, would be limited to no more than 30% of any recovery. At certain levels, at extraordinarily high levels, that number would actually go down to as low as 4% in unusually high, you know, multi-billion dollar recovery. But this presents nothing but upside and opportunity for the county, so we're very excited about that. In the matter of the Curtin &amp; Hefner matter, this is actually a, we expect a relatively uncomplicated matter for the firm to handle, but it is important for us to talk about why we are actually changing law firms in this matter. We currently had other engagements, which I think, and I think the board believes is important to let the public know about. Up until this point, the county had actually been represented by two different law firms in a bankruptcy proceeding where the county was not, you know, going bankrupt, the county just had interests that had wanted to make sure were protected. And those two law firms were a Bucks County firm, Bank of Public, Carlin Mandio, which has represented Bucks in many capacities over the years, as well as the Philadelphia law firm, what was called Pepper-Hamilton, it's now changed names to Trout and Pepper. What we learned shortly after this new administration took office is that those representations were actually not publicly authorized. They were, those engagements went forward without the processes that the Sunshine Act requires. And that by itself is problematic. That by itself is the kind of practice that this administration does not condone, does not follow. In addition to that by itself, there were other problems that we discovered with these relationships. One of these contracts or engagement letters, which are typically signed by a representative of the county, solicitor, perhaps the chief operating officer, perhaps the commissioners, was not even signed by a county employee. That letter, which was with the Pepper firm, was far in excess of the rates that the county has traditionally agreed to. And again, these are rates that we put to the public, that people comment on them. We typically pay for federal litigation, for example, no more than $350 unless there's something unusual. This was a contract that was obligating the county to pay over $800 an hour to Pepper-Hamilton. And again, in an engagement that was never put up for public vote. This was also an agreement that was not covered by any kind of insurance, and so this was all going to be and had been paid for out of pocket by the county. In addition to that, the county has a third-party administrator, which it uses for legal claims that are covered by insurance or potentially covered by insurance or are defensive in nature or fall under certain categories that do not include bankruptcy. But the county, the prior administration had sort of handled the payment of these bills, not through the process that other payments go through, which get reviewed by the county controller, but through that third-party administrator. So until this new administration came in, the county controller was unaware of these bills going out the door. And after having a chance to review these bills and review these agreements, the county controller this year determined that there was no authority for the county to continue to pay these bills. So with that, with all of that said, we are now looking to the future. We do expect that not only will the Curtin &amp; Hefner firm more than amply represent the county's interests, but that this will actually be a fairly limited engagement. This is elicited not to exceed $250 an hour, which was actually the same rate that the county had agreed to pay Bank of Carlin. That engagement letter, by the way, also was not authorized in public meetings. But Curtin &amp; Hefner has also agreed to do not exceed $2,000 for the early parts of this case. So it could end up being less than $250 an hour. So at a minimum, we're not going to pay any more. We're going to make sure the county's interests are protected, and we're going to make sure we're doing things the right way. And I believe that covers both items, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
No. No. Appreciate the work the Law Department put in on that. I know it was a difficult sort of process or complicated issue to sort of navigate through. So I know it took a while to do that, so thank you.
Thank you. Number 19, the Workforce and Economic Development. This is a contract with Bucks County Economic Development Corporation to review and administer the county's process for the third round of the Bucks Back to Work Grant in response to the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $100,000. And with the Bucks County Industrial Development Authority to approve, contract, administer the county's process for the third round of the Bucks Back to Work Grant Program in response to COVID-19 in the amount of $100,000. And with the Redevelopment Authority of the county to approve a contract to review and administer the county's process for the third round of the Bucks Back to Work Grant in the amount of $100,000. And finally, with Visit Bucks County, a contract to approve and review and administer the county's process for the third round of the Bucks Back to Work Grant in response to COVID-19 for $100,000. And we'll ask Ms. McKebbit to give us an update on all that.
So thank you, Commissioners. I am pleased to say that our four economic development agencies in the county will be working together on this third round. But just an update on where we are with the Bucks Back to Work. Quickly, in June, the Commissioners approved $30 million for economic stabilization efforts in the county. And what that meant was that we would get $30 million and go on the streets to the businesses so they could stay open, they could buy PPE and continue to function and operate their businesses. The first round went out, about 900-plus thousand, 900 checks went out to businesses in June and July. And that, and the second round was just this September, about 388 businesses. And the total amount of those grants was about $21 million, $21.7 million. So we still have some money to get out on the street, and the best way to do that was to partner with our economic development organizations that know the industry out there, and they are, right now, working on getting this round together. It will be open November 2nd to the 6th. There'll be two phases of it. The first phase will be grants up to $25,000, and then the second phase will be $5,000 to restaurants. And each have, it's a total of about $4 million. So we're pleased to get this third round out and partner with our economic development organizations. Our Workforce and Economic Development Department will be working with them directly, as will our Controller's Office. The list of businesses that they recommend for approval will come back to the Commissioners for your consideration, the first, the first meeting in December, so we can get the checks out before December 30th. Thank you. We're not cutting it close.
Commissioner Harvey, any questions?
No, I want to thank Ms. McKebbit for, this was sort of her idea, we went through the first two rounds, and she, she thought that there was still a little bit of room where we could work with some of our partners, the agencies here in the county, to take advantage, as she said, of their network and try and get some more money to businesses who are hurting, you know, and before the year ends. So thank you very much, Ms. McKebbit.
Any questions? Okay. If there's not any further questions, is there a motion to approve items on the regular agenda 16 through 19D?
They're moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Moving to personnel actions, is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from anyone on? All those in favor? Aye opposed? And other civics? Anybody have any other civics today?
I don't have any.
I just have one. This is, usually they have an event, probably this week, but they're not having the event, I guess, because of the COVID-19, but for our annual $1,200 contribution to the NAACP. So I'll make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And moving back to Ms. McKebbit and the Chief Operating Officer's report.
So if you will, Commissioners, I am going to yield my time, because the last Commissioners' meeting, we approved an update to our website. And we did not discuss it very much, but I'd like to do that now if we could. And if I could ask Eric Nagy to join us and to discuss that and tell us what the timeline is going to be and how we got there.
Thank you. And Eric, I apologize that we didn't ask you to explain this last meeting, but...
That's all right. My pleasure. So yes, we are undertaking a complete website redesign, rebuild. Just a little background, the last time this website was redesigned was 2005, 15 years ago, which is an eternity in the tech world. The last time an RFP went out was in 2010, which is obviously 10 years ago. It was not acted on. But even if that RFP had been acted on in 10, the website would still be dated today. So imagine 15 years. And if you go to the website, frankly, it shows its age. It's a giant wall of text. Look, county government's probably one of those things you don't think about until you need it, but when you need it, the first place you're going to go is the website. And unfortunately, if you go to ours, it's very difficult to find information. And particularly now, in the middle of a pandemic, that has become readily apparent that we needed to address this and quickly. So we have selected Civic Plus to do our redesign, rebuild, rebrand. Obviously, a website of this magnitude would normally take up to a year, if not longer, to rebuild. We don't have the luxury of time right now. So we are on an accelerated track to get at least half of this done by the end of the year. And if anyone's doing the math, that's coming up very quickly. So with, our goal is to get the COVID-responsive elements out of the way quickly. And what that means is, one of our goals here is to limit in-person interaction as much as we can and keep people socially distanced. That's difficult to do when you have people needing to come into the building for transactional purposes. Right now, there are no transactional elements on the website. There are no forms or functional forms that can replace an in-person visit, and that is something we will address immediately so that you can submit payments online and do it safely and securely. One other thing we'd like to do is create a user ID system. It's an encrypted system where you have one user ID. So Commissioner Harvey is to log on. He has, whether he's interacting with the treasurer's office or the orthonautarian's office or a tax claim, he will be able to log into one end of that. And this is a, this system has two ends. There's the public-facing system, where the public will interact, where they will be able to pay their bills or apply for something like a dog license or a fishing license. And then there's the backend, where county employees will be able to actually go and handle those tasks. And there'll be a tracking element that the end user and the employee will be able to see what each other, where each other has left off in the process. So you'll be able to track that. So a few other things that we're looking to do, primarily, we do not, it is not ADA-accessible currently, which is a problem. And again, has just not been addressed in 15 years. So it's something that we will move quickly to remedy. Even quicker than that, we are going to give the front page a quick facelift. If you go to it right now, it is just a wall of text. In the coming weeks, that will be gone. So that if you're looking specifically for information, you will be able to find it. We will base what we put on that front page to the type of interactions that people most use when they come to either the website or conversely, call the county. Oftentimes, the calls that the county receives are because they couldn't find the answer on the website. So this will address a lot of problems. It will be mobile-friendly. We will have a search system that will actually work. So if you type in dog licenses, it won't populate articles about dog licenses. It will actually get you to the application. So this contract with Civic Plus runs through 2025. We are really excited about it. This is a huge, essential tool for government, for good government and transparency. And it's long overdue, and we're thrilled to be a part of it. I do want to give a shout out to the team, the website task force. This is a multi-department effort. So from IT, we have John Ragula and Mike Gallagher. From public information, Larry King and Jim O'Malley. And from the planning commission, where the website is currently housed, Evan Stone, Julie Kelsner, Drew Highmark, and Kelly Jerome. So I want to give them a shout out. And also, we're working with a local Bucks County user experience designer, Hannah Stackowitz from Middletown Township, who is helping us navigate this process to make sure that the product that we end up with is the one that the public will be best able to function with. Question?
I'm just excited about a search bar. I'm just excited about a search bar. That's just, that's all I need.
What a novelty. So, timeline on this, again, 50% complete by the end of the year. And we will roll this out completely next year, within the first few months. So, this is a, this is a quick build. I will give a warning to the division leaders and department heads that we will be asking a lot of you over the coming months because we're building this to make your departments function better. So, we want to make sure that if there's something that needs to be on there, it's there. There's, we don't have to wish for it anymore. We're saying that if you want it, we're going to make it work.
Questions?
Well, first, thank you for this. And this is something that, you know, I've heard about for a couple of years, the idea that, you know, with the county website, and I've experienced it myself trying to get to the county website and find that information, hearing from people last year that they were just, you know, the website was just not as helpful as it really needed to be. And so, it was one of the things we certainly, transition team recommended, multiple subcommittees on the transition team recommended changing the website. And obviously, we got sort of sidetracked by a pandemic. But now, we're focusing on it because it is going to help with the pandemic. And just to review, I know you kind of alluded to this a few times, but just to make it clear, in terms of designing this, in terms of putting up on the front page, the most common questions, the most common interactions, you've worked with all of the rows, departments, agencies, et cetera, to gather information from them?
So, how we came to those conclusions, and we're not done with that process, but at least in the short term, the site does operate on Google Analytics, so we've been able to pull data from that to see literally what the click-through rate is on whatever links are currently up there. We base it on phone calls that come into the county. So, we've worked with Public Information Department and literally conducted a survey as to why those folks were calling. Also, considering that we're in the middle of a pandemic, a lot of the calls are about that. And since we're in the middle of election, a lot of calls are about that. So, honestly, it's about the stuff beyond that, too, that if we were in regular times, that people would be looking for on the website. So, and then we've sent out interdepartmental surveys to sort of get information about how the public interacts, whether that's in person, whether that's on the phone, whether that's via email, and what type of those interactions are and what the ultimate need for that interaction was to begin with.
Thank you.
So, we're compiling all that, and whatever sort of meets the algorithm and comes up the most frequent response will be on the front page.
Commissioner?
Just good work, good work to everybody involved.
Thank you. We're all looking forward to this.
Thank you all, and thank you for your advocacy to make sure we get this done. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And thank you, Margie.
Any other things you want to throw out there?
No, not great.
Okay. Move to the Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a first, I hope a last. The two updates we have concern, updates on litigation for the U.S. Supreme Court on the other side of the President of the United States. The first concerns, an update we provided about a month ago, Bucks had joined through Amicus briefing some of the litigation to stop the current administration's efforts to shut down the census prematurely. We were successful at the trial level and at the appellate level in the Ninth Circuit. The U.S. Supreme Court overturned that result and allowed the administration to stop the counting of the census. Another matter that is very present in the Board's efforts right now concerns the election, there's been a lot of election litigation, we've talked about quite a bit of it. There was a very significant resolution of a lot of that litigation before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. These were issues that were first raised by the Trump campaign. They sued Bucks County along with the other counties in Pennsylvania and the Commonwealth. And those matters were ultimately actually resolved in state court by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And the Trump campaign and others asked the U.S. Supreme Court to overturn that result. There is, there are, as most folks know, there are only eight justices on the U.S. Supreme Court at this moment. There was a tie, four to four, as to whether or not the U.S. Supreme Court should review the issue that was before it, which in particular concerned the ability for mail-in ballots that come in a few days after the election to be counted. This was an issue that this Board fought for and successfully got protection for Bucks County for those late ballots to be counted. And because there was a tie, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's decision stands, and ballots that come in a couple of days late that were postmarked or at least received within a few days of the election will be counted.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Harvey?
Sure, thank you. And I'll sort of segue into election issues. Obviously, we know that in addition to the county purchasing new voting machines at the end of last year, the state legislature and the governor signed legislation at the end of last year, changing the way we do elections in Pennsylvania. Combine that with the pandemic and, you know, a free flow of misinformation across different forms of media over the past 10 months. And we have a lot of confusion and a lot of concern and anxiety among people, not only in Bucks County, but across Pennsylvania and across the country. We're doing the best we can to try and give out the most accurate, you know, accurate information as much as we can. Our website, there is one of, some of the changes we've made, there is an election portal that's right on the front page of the website. It's the only thing, it's red, white, and blue, so you can't miss it. And clicking on that will allow you to access information about where you can vote, the on-demand voting, questions about the new machines, frequently asked questions, et cetera. But I did want to hit on some of the things that we're seeing and common questions that we're getting and common trends we're seeing. To begin with, there's a lot of questions about the process of doing the mail-in. I can let you know that we, so far at least, and hopefully stays this way, we are seeing a lot of success with the Postal Service. We really had no issues in terms of mail going out or mail coming back. And I say that because I know there's a lot of anxiety, and it's been built up since August when all the news reports about, you know, something happening in the Postal Service and cutbacks and everything else, that people started panicking about their ballots not getting where they needed to get in time. And we're seeing here at this building and the other two government services buildings, lines of people just waiting in line to put their, you know, their ballots in a dropbox, which of course, they're free to do. But in some cases, like here at this building, while they're standing in line, there's often sign standing next to a mailbox where they could just put, you know, the ballot in there, and it's postage-paid. And consider, you know, if you're worried about it getting back to you, the ballot got to you through the mail. And in most cases, we're seeing it getting to people in, you know, two, three days. In fact, the first mailings we did were October 7th. It was the first time mail went out from our mailhouse, ballots going out to people. That was October 7th, that was a Wednesday. Two days later, we had ballots back being dropped off. So, people, in other words, had gotten them, filled them out, and returned them, sometimes with dropboxes. And so, the mail is working very well. And certainly, as we get closer to Election Day, if you're having a little more anxiety about putting it in a mailbox, that's understandable. But, you know, we certainly, it's a good option. Make sure, of course, and you've heard this a lot, and I see the TV ads, but it never hurts to say it more, you know, over and over again, make sure you're using the secrecy envelope. Make sure you don't write on the secrecy envelope. Put that secrecy envelope inside the mailing envelope. Fill out the declaration on the back. You know, we do have a lot of people that, I guess, are hearing different things, and they're concerned they did something wrong, so they're actually cutting open their envelope after they've already sealed it, just to check, to make sure they did everything right. And then they're thinking, well, now I can't use this, I have to go stand in line and get another ballot, another envelope. You can tape it closed. It will be accepted. You know, the worst comes to worst as it goes through the sorter machine, you know, there'll be a little flag, and we'll pull and just see that it's, you know, that it's just taped, that it's a valid envelope, and it will be counted. So, don't have a lot of fear about that. In terms of filling out your information on the back, you know, I said this at the last meeting, there does have to be a signature. There does have to be, you know, information on the back, you're writing your name and your address and the date. You know, if you, you know, that information is checked against your voter file. So, you know, if you're worried about, you know, that my signature isn't the same as it was, that's not something that is going to put your ballot, you know, in the trashcan. You know, no one's signature, you know, the three Commissioners sign, you know, ridiculous amounts of paperwork after this meeting every two weeks. And I can tell you by the, but the last document I'm signing, my signature looks nothing like the first document I signed, because I've been signing for a half hour, and I'm just tired of signing. And so, that is not something that is going to discount your ballot, so please don't have any fear about that. We do have a call center that we did employ a couple of months ago, actually, or last month, September. We know that they are being inundated, they're getting around 1,000 calls a day from people who are concerned. We are actually going to expand their operation to shorten the wait time for the next two weeks so that people, if they want to call there, can get through. We are giving them information from the Board of Elections. You know, as we're getting information, it might change. We're making sure they're aware of it so they do have information that is as updated as possible. So, we're doing, we're doing that as well. You do, you can only put in one ballot in the dropbox per person. You know, we do have people coming, and it's, you know, a spouse who has their own ballot and their spouse's ballot, and they want to put them both in. You can only do one at a time, you can only do your own. And so, the sheriff's deputies or the security guards who are there, they are enforcing the law. You know, you can't sort of stuff in lots of different envelopes. You know, and that's again, another reason, you know, you can use the mail. The mail will bring it back to us. We are extending hours effective today at the three locations for dropboxes. And there will be hours this weekend for those who want to go to one of the three offices here, Quakertown or Levittown, and those are on our website on the election portal, the new hours. And just in terms of statistics, the last of the bulk mailings went out on Friday. We are still mailing out some absentee mail-in ballots specifically for people who have just filed for them, like in the last, you know, couple of days or several days, or for people who just registered to vote because Monday was the last day to register. And we did get about 2,000 new registrants that came in just on Monday. So, all those people have to be processed first, and if they wanted absentee or mail-in ballots, they now have to be processed. So, those haven't gone out yet, but, you know, we have mailed out somewhere around the 160, 170,000 ballots have gone out. We've gotten back somewhere in the area, we're getting back thousands and thousands every day in dropboxes and mail. Somewhere in the area of 30, 40,000, we've already gotten back. And we still have two weeks to go. And so, we do encourage you to take a deep breath, take a look at the county website, take a look at some of the videos on there, take a look at some of the information we have. And, you know, certainly, we will, we will get through the next two weeks successfully. I have a lot of faith in our Board of Elections here. And, you know, I just ask people to have that little bit of peace of mind that we're doing what we can, and we're seeing a lot of success in terms of what we're, what we've already gotten back.
Thank you. Commissioner DeGrae, Elmo.
Thank you. And again, this is our last meeting before Election Day. I think our next meeting is the day after Election Day, right? So, that should be interesting. I think Commissioner Harvey just did a great job of explaining where we are
Thank you.
And what's going on. I just want to say, I have never seen such enthusiasm and, in a way, excitement for an election in my entire, in my entire life. There is so much enthusiasm out there for people to vote. And I've gone out numerous times and looked at our dropboxes and the lines of people waiting to get up there just to put their vote, their envelope in the box. And there's actually quite a few people that are actually having their picture taken as they're dropping their ballot in the box. I guess they want to have a picture and maybe send it around to their relatives or whatever, whatever they do with their picture. And how many people, we have stickers outside as well, that "I voted," and how many people go and want to get one of those stickers and put it on after they drop that ballot? So, there is just so much enthusiasm out there over this election. And my favorite saying is "democracy at work," because this is just a perfect example of democracy at work. And Commissioner Harvey said, "We're going to make this work." We were hoping that the legislature this week would give us more time to open the envelopes and scan the ballots. We can only start on Election Day right now. It does not look like that's going to happen, and I'm almost sure it's not going to happen now because today's the last day they're in session. And they couldn't come to an agreement on, you know, how many days or other issues. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to point a finger and blame anybody. There's probably enough blame to go around for both sides that they couldn't come to a compromise on this and find a way to make it happen because it was absolutely the right thing to do for Pennsylvania. But at least now, we know the rules and regulations that we have to work with. We can't start canvassing the ballots till Election Day, 7:00 in the morning. And even though I would have liked to see, and I think almost everybody else would have liked to have seen some days before, we are going to absolutely do the best we can with what we have to work with. And I have all the confidence in the world and our Board of Election staff that they are going to do everything they can to safely and securely get those envelopes opened up and get those ballots counted as quickly as humanly possible. And the three Commissioners are committed to helping out. I know we've got a little plan to be there all the time, one of us to make sure, you know, that if there's any problems arise, that one of us are there. So, all the confidence in the world of our Board of Election staff that we're going to do the best job possible to get these counted as safely and quickly as possible. And I've been saying this for a long time, I just want to let everybody know that whether you choose to vote by mail or whether you choose to go to the poll and vote on Election Day like I am going to do, that you can feel safe in going to vote. You can feel safe that you're, if you choose the mail-in ballot, that your vote will be counted, and it is safe and secure. And we are going to do the best we can. And again, democracy at work and less than two weeks to go now. So, I am excited. I know the presidential race is drawing a lot of the attention, but we also, let's not forget about our local races as well. I mean, we have congressional races and state House races. So, just encourage everybody, get out there and vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, I thank you. Commissioner DeGrae, you know, jarred my memory. One more thing I kind of wanted to point out, something else we're seeing, and people standing in line. There is a term that's being thrown around a lot, it's misleading to people. I understand why it's being used, but it's misleading and causing confusion, early voting. There are certain states where they have what's called early voting. And that's, in those states, generally speaking, you know, people are going and they're voting early, and their votes are being tabulated although not released. That's not what happens here in Pennsylvania. So, there are people who are standing in line because they've heard, whether through email or text messages or some kind of, they got something in the mail about go do early voting. And they're standing in line, and some of them are standing in line with their mail-in ballot that they've already applied for and received, and they want to turn it in so they can early vote. That's not, you know, not the way it works. When you come here to this building or the other two buildings and you want to do in-person mail-in voting, essentially, what you're doing is applying for mail-in ballot, getting it while you're wait, filling it out, and then handing it back in the secrecy envelope and the mail envelope, everything filled out on the back. If you've already applied for mail-in ballot or absentee ballot, what you have received at your house is the same thing you're going to get if you come here. So, there really is no reason, you know, to come here with something you've already applied for, just to apply for the same thing over again and fill it out. It doesn't, nothing gets counted early. We can't count anything, as you heard Commissioner DeGrae Elmo say, we can't count anything till Election Day. And so, I think for some people, they just want to, they want to make sure their vote gets counted. Well, it doesn't matter if you handed it in last Friday or if you show up on Election Day, the votes are all counted at the same time. So, just, you know, the one more thing, just to, again, something we're seeing from our staff at the three places, what they're hearing from people. And again, it's a brand-new law, it's the first time we've ever done this, first time for our staff to do this, first time for the three Commissioners to do this, doesn't matter how long we've been here. You know, this is the first time anybody's going through this, and so, it's understandable that there's some confusion. But we're just trying to make sure that everyone understands, you know, what the, how this process works. process works.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? I was hoping you were going to raise your hand. It's the District Attorney, Matt Weintraub. Feel free to come up. I'm hoping you might be able to touch base, if this wasn't what you were going to talk about, on Election Day security issues, since we're all Election Day here.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I have a couple of comments I'd like to make, and I'll end with that, if that's okay. First, I'd like to commend three commissioners, but you in particular, and Mr. Griggs for really taking a look at the community and seeing what the needs are, that Bristol community, they need more help than most. And to put a community center right there in the heart of where it's needed, especially in a community that's heavily minority, that's really what, what good government's all about, serving the needs of the people. So thank you for your follow-through on that.
Thanks for calling us on that, too.
And second, this is a strange times we live in, but we do have our Drug Takeback Day on Saturday. Most people don't know this, but you can drop your drugs off, your old expired-on-use medications, vapes, and pet meds, too, anytime at any one of our permanent locations. And I think there are in most of our police office, our police departments, and in our hospitals, five out of the six hospitals. But on Saturday, we have our semi-annual push, and this Saturday is our drive-up-and-drop-off, drive-up-and-drop-in campaign. And we in Bucks County lead the state in medication take-back. We are number one, and I'm very competitive. I'd like to remain number one. So 147,000 pounds of medication that can't be used to hurt or kill anybody ever again, and let's just keep building on that total. And then finally, to address that which you just asked me to address, I personally have met with all of the chiefs of police, all of the constables who are primarily responsible under the law for the security at the voting booths, at the voting places, I'm sorry, the polling places. And we went over almost a primer, if you will, of what is permitted and what is not permitted. But if I could state it very plainly, the number-one priority is the safety of anybody that wants to vote. They will be able to do so free of any intimidation, fraud, or coercion. That is our number-one priority, and that has been espoused to all of the chiefs of police and all of the constables. And I have a lot of faith in us here in Bucks County, and I expect that that will be the norm. But just in case anybody feels intimidated, and I hope that that's not the case, the police, they cannot get close to the polls unless they're called, and they understand that. They have to maintain 100 feet distance unless they are called specifically to act. But if any person is feeling any kind of coercion or intimidation or suspects that they've been party to a fraud, they should contact the police, they can contact the county, the Board of Elections, or they can contact me and believe me, we've been getting some contacts, and we're running them down. So I expect to be, as you said, a lot of enthusiasm, Commissioner DeGraeulmo. It's going to be the vote of a lifetime. I, myself, am voting by mail. See, I have confidence in the system. That's how I'm demonstrating my confidence in the system. But however you choose to vote, we will make sure that your vote gets counted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, Commissioner, we try to err on the side of putting the comments. I think this can be read as a comment on our agenda item concerning the election and online access. So we have a public comment that came in from Courtney Shaya, S-H-A-Y-A. She had not provided her municipality. She now has, she's from Northampton. Her public comment is as follows. Why have sample ballots not been published at the county website, and when will they be published?
Sample ballots? We're going to ask Gail, the clerk, to address that.
Thank you for that question. The answer is they need to be as soon as possible, and we will. I think it's just the Board of Elections staff phone is ringing off the hook, and they're processing the ballots coming in. But I'll tend to that today, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, we did provide, just for the record, we did provide sample ballots to both the Bucks County Republican Committee and the Bucks County Democratic Committee. So they have an idea, and they've been able to circulate those through their networks.
Great. Anything else?
No, Commissioner.
Okay, so no further public comment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you November 4th after you vote. Thanks.